You're on.
All right, Hazel, are you Hazel, are you able to put your camera on or?
Yeah.
And Edgar, what was it Edgar?
He's there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, good evening, everyone. I'm glad everybody can make it tonight. We're here for the Transportation Committee. Is hosting this public hearing to talk about the White Plains Road, Pelham Parkway to Burke Avenue project. Um, I am Hazel Mura. I am the co-chair of Transportation. And before we start out, like the rest of the committee members to introduce themselves.
In the room or online first?
I'm sorry?
In the room or online first?
Now, in the room, in the room.
Muriel Locken member.
Veronica Castro, acting board chair.
Deborah Koalik member.
Ryan Barthel member.
And Edgar?
Edgar, if you didn't remember.
Okay, Hazel.
Is that it? Okay. So, um, I guess we're gonna start with the presentation or are we gonna go? Into the speakers, because I'm a little confused with the agenda.
Yeah, it seems that they, that they're gonna kind of give a short synopsis, a redo of last month's. And then, then let the, then let the public speak.
So, I'm, I was under the impression and others can join, but when I spoke to Jeremy and Rabbi that it was more of a community, the members asking questions and stating their concerns that we were not gonna re-present something that we already presented. That this is a public hearing for the public to express their concerns.
Okay.
That's what I was informed, we're not, we're not re-presenting, because everything is online, all the information's online.
That's fine, if you don't want to do that.
Is there any way you can, is there any way you can give us a Cliff Notes of it, like say?
Yeah, I mean, we can put the, we can, we can put the link in the chat, and then anybody who has questions, the project manager's here. And he can answer any questions that you may have.
I'm happy to like, also, I'm happy to just quickly share just like, uh, a few slides, just to quickly show, just to make sure. Just to show what it's gonna look like. I, I think, you know, we gave this presentation to this same group last month. I don't wanna run through it all again and uh, use the time, but I'm happy to just show a couple of slides and Holly can put the link to that in the chat so that everybody can view the more detailed version of that.
Okay, why, why don't we do that real quick and then we'll get right into the speakers?
Okay, that sounds good. Give me one second. Alright, so I'm gonna, I'll share my screen and I'll go through a very just upridged version, um, just to kind of just to make sure everyone is on the same page and we all remember. Um, can everybody see this?
Yeah, hold on, I got a box in my way.
Alright, let me know when you're ready.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I'll go through this and again, we're, the whole time today was for any questions and answers and comments that people have. And I see Holly just put the link to the present, the full presentation in the chat. It's the same thing that I'm showing here right now. Um, so just there we go. Okay, so just as a quick reminder, the portion, the product that we're talking about today is on White Plains Road, uh, between Burke Avenue in the north and Pelham Parkway North, uh, is the southern limit. Uh, building off of the work we've done further north on White Plains Road already. You can see an example of what that looks like here. Uh, just really quickly mentioning as well that uh, work that we've done with in the first year after we did this project further north on White Plains Road with the protected bike lane, the bus boarding islands organizing the roadway. We already saw a fifteen percent reduction in injuries and a ten percent increase in cyclist volumes in just one year after implementing the project. Um, we're here today, we're continuing this work because both it's an important bike connection, but also it's really a safety project at White Plains Road. It's a vision zero priority corridor due to the high rates of pedestrians, severe injuries on the corridor. And just this mile, there've been over two hundred injuries on White Plains Road, including ten severe injuries. Um, I won't go through the details, but our outreach team talked to all of the businesses on the stretch of White Plains Road last year. This is kind of a quick overview of what the street looks like. Now you have one moving lane in between the columns. And then on the outside, you have parking and you have this kind of ambiguous space, uh, that is often used for double parking, that's mainly used for double parking. Uh, sometimes it's used for cars continuing on. Any cyclists are also using this space outside between the columns and sidewalks. Um, some of the issues that we're looking to address today are issues with these kind of vehicle conflicts and double parking, um, especially with movements around the columns. Uh, lots of issues with visibility, especially for pedestrians going, uh, crossing White Plains Road or side streets because of the presence of columns. Can be really hard for drivers and pedestrians to see one another. Um, a big issue is the, the existing bus stops on White Plains Road are not ADA compliant, so it's a, you know, against the, uh, really, it's against the Americans with Disabilities Act, so we're bringing them up to code, but also it's unsafe for people getting on and off the bus if people and cars are passing the bus while the buses picking up or dropping off passengers. And there's no dedicated bike facilities on this part of White Plains Road. Um, so this is a cross-section of what this will, what we're proposing to the changes on White Plains Road. So we'll be taking the, what is currently curbside parking and moving it to be adjacent to the columns, so kind of floating, not, so it's not directly uh, adjacent to the sidewalks. We'll be kind of defining that space with markings on both sides of it. Um, and we'll have our protected bike lane on the curb in both the north and southbound directions. Uh, we'll be adding concrete bus boarding islands, Warring Ave as part of the work this year. ASAD is kind of gonna happen in the future as part of some capital projects. Uh, we'll be installing painted pedestrian refuge islands at all intersections where possible. Uh, shorten those crossing distances for pedestrians and improve the visibility um, for between drivers and pedestrians, as well as, and those pedestrian islands, as well as the kind of vertical elements or plastic posts or rubber speed bumps. We'll really encourage slower and safer turns onto and off of White Plains Road, uh, to help make sure that, uh, people are crossing and turning safely and that, uh, drivers are yielding to pedestrians and cyclists. Um, so this'll connect on the northern end, the, for the bike network, it'll connect to the existing White Plains Road, uh, protected bike lane that starts currently at Burke Avenue, but also connect to the existing east-west bike lanes on Burke Avenue. And then at the southern end, this'll connect to the Greenway Network, uh, both in Burlesque Park East and as well as the Greenway. Um, this is just a really, I think this is just an important point to hammer home quickly that, you know, we talk about this, that one of the most visible changes are the protected bike lanes, um, but that protected bike lanes are really one of the most effective safety treatments that we have, um, in our toolbox. Uh, protected bike lanes are really because of the elements that come with them, the shortening of the crossing distances, the uh, encouraging of slower and safer turns, the organizing of the roadway. It's a really effective safety treatment for all roadway users. Um, we see that, uh, where we've installed protected bike lanes, we've, for, uh, for everybody using the roadway, we have about a fifteen percent reduction in injury and a sixteen percent reduction in KSI, which is killed or severely injured. And that those numbers increase for pedestrians and increase even more for senior pedestrians. Um, senior pedestrians are among our more vulnerable road users. So, what we're seeing, treatments like protected bike lanes, uh, have these substantial safety improvements for senior pedestrians. Um, we know that these are improving, uh, making the street safer for everybody. Um, so just to kind of run through some of the details of what we're look, of the project quickly. Um, where, where we'll be installing the bus stops under the L. This is part of our, uh, it's a federally funded program, uh, to build out these bus boarding islands that you can see in the bottom right here on White Plains Road further north, um, where we build out these bus boarding islands to provide an ADA compliant bus stop for riders going on to and off the bus so that the bus can deploy the wheelchair ramp. Um, and also it prevents drivers from passing the bus on the right. So we'll be, like I mentioned, we'll be doing these at Warring Avenue this year. And then at Mace Avenue, those will be coordinated with a, um, capital project that's moving forward in twenty twenty-six. I mean, you can see again, the bottom photo is an example, we've been installing these along White Plains Road as part of our work further north on the corridor. This is a, a kind of overhead example of what a typical block will look like. The protected bike lane on the curves that you can see really kind of providing this dedicated space, the more organized roadway, uh, where the with the defined parking lane for cars between the columns and for also providing that protection for cyclists. Then elements at the intersections are painted pedestrian islands that shorten these crossing distances across White Plains Road and make sure that pedestrians have a space to, where they can stand and wait to cross where they're visible to oncoming drivers. And as well, just noting the, that we'll include channelization as needed, uh, to make sure that the curb is kept, that access to the curb is maintained for FDNY and for emergency vehicles. Just a few other, uh, visuals, just to go through quickly. This is an example of what, uh, this, what the bus boarding island will look like. This is, uh, showing Warring Avenue, the one that will be, uh, building this year, where you can see our concrete bus boarding island uh, that allows the bus people, riders to get on and off the bus, but also provides those same benefits, uh, to shorten the crossing distances across White Plains Road and improve that visibility between drivers and uh, pedestrians, as well as elements like our rubber speed bumps, channelization, that makes sure that when people are turning across the bike lane, they're doing so at a slow and safe speed. Um, this is an example at Allerton Avenue where we have, there are already kind of these extended sidewalks at the intersections at Allerton, Allerton Avenue. That was done as a previous, uh, previous capital project. At these locations, we'll be bringing the markings for the bike lanes onto the sidewalk, uh, to guide cyclists, uh, over these, over these exist, expanded sidewalks. But we'll be including where we do this, signage, as well as the markings are done in a way uh, to indicate that cyclists must be yielding to pedestrians in all of these shared spaces. Uh, the most complicated portion of this just is the southern, is the southern portion, could just go over this. This part of the proposal and how we're planning to connect, um, the bike lanes from White Plains Road to the Greenway at Pelham Parkway North. Um, so what, if you kind of were far away from the right side of the screen going left, the southernmost block of White Plains Road before it merges into Boston Road, uh, so kind of south of Warring Avenue. Instead of having a one-way bike lane on each side, we'll have a two-way bike lane on the west side of White Plains Road. Um, the cyclists will come to the kind of dead end of White Plains Road and be brought on to and over the, the large sidewalk space here. Again, with signage and markings indicating that bikes should be yielding to pedestrians. And then, kind of right around Astor Avenue, uh, the bikes will be brought back onto Boston Road now on that west curb. And they'll be brought down to Dwight's Place. At Dwight's Place, we'll be, uh, adding a painted pedestrian curb extension to shorten the crossing distances um, for pedestrians, as well as make sure that, uh, again, kind of encourage slower and safer turns at this intersection before bringing the bikes back, kind of crossing them over Boston Road and continuing that two-way bike lane down the west side of White Plains Road. To Pelham Parkway North, where the bikes will be brought on to the Greenway, just kind of right, which is just outside of this image. And then also noting, because of this plan, there's an existing, uh, bus stop just on the north side of Dwight's Place, which serves the BX, um, the BX M eleven route, as well as three E Westchester Beeline routes. Um, those will be moved to Pelham Parkway North. Um, we're actually gonna be moving to them to the south side of this intersection, um, but we're adding a new traffic signal at the intersection of Boston Road and Pelham Parkway North, uh, which will allow, uh, riders and pedestrians to safely cross Boston Road here. Um, just also, just quickly and then we'll get into the Q and A portion. Um, we're gonna be looking to update all of the curbside regulations and the parking regulations as needed, um, to manage access along the corridor. So that's gonna be included, looking at adding loading zones near supermarkets and retail stores at busy commercial areas. Uh, looking at where the meat, where the meters are and are looking to, uh, to really do that, to make sure that we're providing space for deliveries to be made, um, without forcing them to double park or block the bike lanes. Right now, we're estimating that this will repurpose for the safety treatments and for the bus stop treatments, um, about forty spots over the entirety of the one-mile corridor. Um, so to summarize, um, this project really, we think it's gonna really affect a safety treatment that'll both help to really organize the roadway, clarify these movements underneath the elevated subway. Um, it'll provide these safety improvements with slower and safer turns. It'll reduce conflicts and improve, uh, visibility for between drivers, cyclists and pedestrians. Um, they'll have these important ADA accessible and safer bus stops along the corridor for people riding the buses on White Plains Road. That'll reduce speeding and vehicle conflicts along the corridor. And then the protected bike lane both calms traffic. It allows us to install all these other safety treatments that are feasible without the protected bike lane. Um, so we'll have a shorter crossing distances, organized roadway and make it a lot safer while also adding uh, two-lane miles of protected bike lanes in the books. Um, so that's the very quick version of the presentation. Think now, I can, uh, I'll stop sharing, uh, my screen, but happy to go back to any slides or visuals, um, if people have questions about anything specific.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you so much, Ben, for that. Um, just in case, I think I forgot to mention and, uh, just for the record, today's Monday, June third, uh, twenty twenty-four. Just in case, I, I kind of think I forgot that. Um, okay, so Debbie, can you, um, start with the registered, um, speakers and remember, you guys have two minutes of uninterrupted speaking time. Um, I'm not sure who's gonna be uh, doing the time. Can one of you guys volunteer?
Debbie's gonna do it.
Okay, great. Alright, Deb, so take it away.
Hold on, I found my stopwatch.
Sorry, everybody.
Okay.
Okay, so the first speaker registered on this list is Roxanne Del Raco. Sam, are you ready?
One second, because I don't speak next to the mic and I can never hear myself speak on video.
Okay. Ten minutes.
So I'm the founder of Friends of Pelham Parkway, I'm also a pedestrian. Within, within two days, I basically went through all the businesses from Pelham Parkway North and Burke Avenue. The majority, all of them, all the ones I spoke to did not know about this proposed plan. That means that DOT did not do any outreach to these small businesses that are owned by first generation and family-owned. And who've been doing business in this area for decades. And the large supermarkets, about five supermarkets within Pelham Parkway North always to Burke Avenue, and none of them knew about this. And they were very concerned how this would affect their business, that it affects Key Food on Bronxdale. Secondly, what about parksite housing? What happens, there's a fire there. How would the FDNY and Y ladder reach there if it, with the elevated train station and a protective bike lane? I mean, that's a very concern for nature. Thirdly, I saw people were not against a traditional bike lane, but when I went through from, uh, um, Burke Avenue to Gun Hill, many of these bike lanes within a block were broken into segments. It didn't even look like a bike lane. In one block, they were broken into six different segments. So there's a bike lane that stops being a bike lane because of driveway and because bike, it was still speed bike lane, it stops being a bike lane. It, it looked ridiculous. That's not how someone could bike with five, within five or six segments within a block. Why not do a smooth bike lane, uh, adjacent to the columns, a traditional bike lane? Secondly, safety. Well, safety went out the door with Bronxdale Road Diet. We never got the data for DOT after how many incidents had happened since they implemented that road diet. I mean, we don't have much time to say anything. That's very sad, because and then you, I think the reason why people ask, why is DOT doing this? DOT is doing it because they have a legal mandate to construct fifty miles of protected bike lane by law passed by City Council twenty nineteen, but they're picking on very marginalized communities because they know we cannot fight back. So that's very unfair what DOT is doing. Because you're marginalized, you're picking on marginalized communities and businesses are not thriving due to many reasons, economic downturn, small sizes. And now this, it's not fair. But of course, you know, in two minutes is not right. You should allow, especially when I went to, two days of speaking to people about this plan, but that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Yeah, I'd like to have at least thirty seconds to finish, please.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to say to DOT, I know you have a legal mandate, but you have to be equitable. This mayor, this whole city, I'd like to play equity. I'd like to play the demographics, but look at who you're picking on. Majority immigrants, working poor people who don't have legal recourse. And what you're doing is wrong. This is not safety. This is for election next year, so you can say you met the mandate. That's what this is about. I would like you to think about the traditional bike lane. We're not against bike lanes. But we can't repeat what happened in Bronxdale and what's happening currently, uh, more of Burke Avenue. There's lots of complaints with those businesses which I spoke to as well. Thank you so much.
Uh, for the record, Roxanne, could you provide a list of the stores you went to?
Yes.
And I have a bit that I don't believe you, but
Okay.
because when we had the presentation, they did say they spoke to the store.
No, they did not. They didn't speak to park psychologists.
Okay, no, so that's one thing.
Okay.
It was good. Sam's plan, they did not. They did not. They spoke to all these brands.
No.
Okay, it's fine. Okay, so I'd like that for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, next.
Thank you.
Okay, um, is Gabriel Barron online? Gabriel Barron.
On our trigger.
If you're on the telephone, press star six to unmute yourself. Is Gabriel Barron online? Okay, I'm moving on then. Um. George Torres. If you're wherever you're comfortable, you can speak from there if you wish, or you can stand up and see.
I said, um.
No, stay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll try to read quickly.
Okay.
The people online can't see you. Is that okay? Thanks, Rick. Thank you. Actually, okay.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Uh, good evening, committee members. My name is George Torres and I'm the district manager for Community Board Twelve in the Bronx. I'm your neighbor to the north. I will read my prepared statements since I'm on the clock. I am not here to convince you to vote one way or the other, only to convey what has transpired at Community Board Twelve since DOT rolled out the bike lanes on White Plains Road. I'm here to talk about DOT's plans to extend bike lanes underneath the elevated train line, similar to what was done in my district a couple of years ago. To be clear, Community Board Twelve voted in favor of adding bike lanes on White Plains Road. My board members thought they were doing the right thing by bringing this vital mode of transportation to the board. We were a little leery of being the first community board to have bike lanes underneath the elevated train, but we were told that this was going to be rolled out everywhere in short order. In conversations with DOT, we felt that the bike lanes would help alleviate the double parking concerns that we had on White Plains Road. Since our bike lanes were installed, it's been a complete disaster. I do not know how DOT intends on rolling out the bike lanes here, but in Community Board Twelve, they were just painting the street. This design came out of their expense budget, which meant that there were no capital improvements made to the street prior to the marking of the lanes. Initially, we received complaints from some riders about potholes and uneven pavement in the bike lanes. Moreover, they were not painted right away. It took DOT several months to actually paint the roadway green after laying down the markings. I am doubtful, but this may be one of the reasons for the initial confusion of drivers who were parking their cars on White Plains Road. You may or may not be aware that FDNY did not want the bike lanes installed underneath the elevated train trestle. As the, FDNY went so far as to hold a demonstration for DOT to highlight their concerns about fired, fight, fighting high-rise fires from the center lane underneath the train trestle. FDNY's ladder and bucket trucks could not elevate the apparatus above the second floor of the structure without hitting the underside of the train trestle. Part of the agreement to when FDNY signed off was to create loading zones that were dual in purpose to allow for local truck loading and unloading and help with firefighting activities. Therein lies another problem with bike lanes. These loading zones are large mid-block parking areas designated by white stripes. Parking is not allowed in these areas. Drivers immediately started angle parking along White Plains Road. I was told by the forty-seventh precinct that they were unaware that angle parking was not legal because of these markings. Let me address some concerns that were shared by the business owners and residents of my community board. Prior to the installation of the bike lanes, our transportation held no less than three separate committee meetings regarding the bike lanes. There was not much interest at first, but since it's implementation, we still get people who attend our meetings today who try to get, get us to reverse our decision. Some of our businesses on White Plains Road stated that they were losing business because their customers could no longer park, run in and get what they needed. By pushing the parking lane closer to the center of the roadway, we eliminated double parking. However, we created a new problem of double or triple parking because now vehicles were double parking between the trains' columns. White Plains Road has an active bus route, which forces buses and other vehicles to wait for a lull in oncoming traffic lane to go around, to go around these double slash triple parked cars, creating a very dangerous situation. Finally, most of the things I've talked about are concerns related to enforcement. The forty-seventh precinct has not met the challenge that DOT imposed on it with the implementation of bike lanes. It is documented that the forty-seventh precinct is one of the busiest precincts in the borough. Is the forty-ninth precinct up to the challenge of enforcing parking regulations? I hate to say this publicly, but the NYPD is not a willing partner in this endeavor. Let's be clear about why this is even a discussion. DOT is mandated to roll out bike lanes because they're woefully behind on a mandate to build out bike lanes. The NYC Streets Plan requires the City of New York to install at least fifty miles of protected bike lanes each year from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six and a total of two hundred and fifty miles in five years from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. So far, one point five out of the fifty required miles have been installed in twenty twenty-four. Overall, fifty-nine point nine out of two hundred and fifty required miles by twenty twenty-six have been installed. DOT is complicit in the problems facing my community board. They cannot ignore what's happening in my neck of the woods while trying to sell you a bill of food in yours. I would suggest it is more prudent to wait until they perfected it in one place. It exists now. Do not take my word for it. Take a stroll or drive down White Plains Road in my neighborhoods. You will see vehicles angle parked. You'll see them parked in the bike lane, obstructing the bike lane with no summonses or threat of being towed. See dirty seat streets because DSNY can no longer do ASP cleaning because they cannot go down the bike lane. White Plains Road is filthy. I'm here because I vowed to go to every community board with elevated train lines to warn them what was to follow, because once you say yes, DOT will not do anything to remedy the situation after the fact. Thank you for your time and patience, George Torres, District Manager of Community Board Twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. My question to you, Mr. Torres, is it nice to meet you, by the way? My question to you is, why you want to decide, I see everything is negative in there. Why is this?
I, like I said, I just wanted to convey what was said. We were supportive of bike lanes. Um, we have voted, we've not voted to remove them or ask DOT to do anything in that, in that endeavor. Um, but it's not fair for me to talk on something that the board has not voted on. We voted in favor of it, so technically we're in favor. But I will say that, I mean, Debbie has come to some of our meetings. You can see that people come to us and they're like, oh, can you reverse bike lanes? Because DOT tells us it's up to the community board. And I'm like, no, it's not really up to us.
I got you. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have questions for Mr. Torres? No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin. Where are you?
I am here.
Okay, Kevin, no, Kevin's registered to speak for the regular.
I got him here, I missed you.
Yeah, but that, oh, wait, oh, I apologize.
I was just covering both things, right? Okay. Uh, thank you for letting me speak. Sorry? Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize if we would be speaking before or after the presentation. I have seen the presentation before. I'm, I'm happy that I do have the opportunity to repeat what was kind of, what I had said at the, uh, committee meeting. So, you know, here, here's my little word here. I think it's great that the DOT did the pilot program of, uh, trying out the bike lanes under the L trains, I live near Westchester Avenue where we have the same type of structures. But the fact that, uh, that they did that and they want to expand that to me is, is a good thing. Um, I, I, there are a couple of things you mentioned. I don't want to get too far into, but I want to show people to speak before and after you. But to organize parking in the travel lanes, to organize, uh, pedestrian refugee islands and bus build-outs, uh, making commuting predictable by having a bike lane, by having a parking lane, by having bus build-outs is what's important here. what's important here is the safety and if the, you want to call it a bike network program, you want to call it a safety program, either way, it's about safety and those pedestrians getting through those crosswalks. Uh, I did hear rumors, I guess those rumors were confirmed during this call here, that somebody had gone to some businesses and you know, kind of presented their points of views, maybe converted some businesses about what loading zones really are and how they work and how unfair they'll be to businesses and meters, whether they cut the time down to give you more, more customers in the course of an hour. Uh, but I'm glad that person brought it up because I hope some of those businesses are here today and did hear the presentation and have an open mind and, you know, feel like um, that may not all be true, that they got an open mind of what they heard tonight. I, I think it might be an issue. I know that you have tried this on Westchester Avenue for pedestrian walkways, I believe it is. Across the bus islands, I know that's kind of a dangerous thought. I hope there's a lot of thought into that about signage and protection of as cyclists get up on the curb, up an ADA ramp and down an ADA ramp, but at twenty feet being on a curb, riding next to what might be subway staircase and or just a wide spilled out. Um, I didn't get into the specs. I'll let you get the DOT to the specs, but I, one of the specs I read was that there were over three hundred cyclists per day on Pellon Parkway, West Plains Road. So keep that in mind that although one hundred percent of the people or eighty-five percent of the people on this call might be drivers, that whatever percentage three hundred is, there's certain people that use that intersection right there, White Plains Road and Pellon Parkway. Thanks for bringing up enforcement. Everything is about enforcement. Actually, everything is about the lack of enforcement. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, Council District Manager. And illegal parking and double parking, give no room for day walking, which is why we need to think enforcement. Um, that's my piece on the White Plains Road issue. Thank you for hearing me out.
Time.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so now who do we have that's not on this list?
Diana Finch.
Diana Finch, you're on.
Hello, I'm speaking on behalf of Bronx Park East Community Association. In existence since twenty twelve, we advocate for the area from Pellon Parkway North through the parkside houses, Bronx Park East, to White Plains Road. We have an email list of one hundred and fifty, a Facebook group of nearly eighteen hundred, and monthly in-person meetings. We've discussed this project at our May meeting and in numerous individual conversations with residents and businesses. We did a walkthrough with DOT of Thwaites Boston Road along with Stephen Restaurant Owner Victor Pena, whose delivery people will now have immediate access to a bike lane in both directions. We are in favor, especially of the new crosswalk across Boston Road at Pellon Parkway North, something we requested as long ago as twenty sixteen. Now, there are, however, three pressure points we're concerned about. One, the Thwaites Boston Road intersection. We know too well, it's very dangerous. Just this past weekend, there were two crashes with injuries there, one between a car and a pedestrian, one between a car and a city bike rider. However, we want enough space at the crosswalk for cars to separate into two lanes, including a right turn lane down Boston Road. During rush hours, there's very heavy traffic here. Cars waiting to turn right often don't make it through the intersection during the light change. If there's only room for one car at a time, the traffic backup all the way to Bronx Park East and Allerton will be intolerable. Two, cyclist pedestrian conflict where the bike lane runs on the sidewalk, especially at Allerton, where there are street vendors, subway stairs, and bus stops, with pedestrians using off leaves who will cross the bike lane. Three, Center Light Senior Center. Center Light Senior Center on the northwest corner of Waring and White Plains Road with a designated ambulate-only parking area where vans pick up and drop off clients all day long and need to park up against the curb to unload. We thank the Bronx DOT and in particular, community agents specialists alone for considering these and remaining open to working out solutions. Thank you. Thanks, Holly.
Thank you, Miss Finch. Next.
Next is Bob Press.
Mister Press, you're on.
Okay, having read this presentation, after the Pellon Parkway, uh, when you clocked two hundred and eighty-two cyclists observed on there uh, in November of twenty twenty-three. When was this observed? At what times? How many were pizza delivery or other delivery, food delivery people? And how many times did the same person go through it? Two, three, four, five times? Allerton Avenue have bus bulbs that were put in for subway riders protection. Now you're gonna have pedestrians dodging bicycles, e-bikes, e-scooters, mopeds, uh, that will travel over the island. By the way, on Southern Boulevard, the same type of islands were put in and the bicycles would and e-bikes and scooters will go over them. How many people have been hurt on Southern Boulevard? We haven't heard anything about Southern Boulevard. Uh, when a bus breaks down, by the way, at one of these raised bus boarding areas, uh, you now take away the whole northbound or southbound travel lane. And it takes up to four hours or more for MTA to come and move that bus. This has been witnessed on Westchester Avenue where it's similar, but without a bus, without a bike lane. Now, the mayor, during the pandemic, instituted street dining. With a bike lane at the curb lane, you will no longer have street dining. Uh, so what is going to happen to businesses that want to have street dining? You won't allow that since there's a bike lane there and it's gonna hurt businesses and many businesses will have to then close up. Finally, uh, bikes, e-bikes, and mopeds currently cannot be policed because they don't have license plates or registration, so they can't be identified. Uh, when will they get registered registrations and license plates? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Press. Next customer.
Jean Francis.
Can I get the visual of Allerton diagram that DOT provided?
Yeah, which?
The overview of Allerton intersection. Yeah, give me one second.
Slide nineteen, I believe.
And just for all the city agencies while we're.
Is this the one?
Yeah. So, and Bob alluded to it, this right here was the bump out that was built about seven years ago that's gonna be destroyed and demolished, that it's gonna cut through. What you're gonna have here, this isn't really to scale, because this is gonna cut off into a small island. I think there's an actual visual photo. And you're gonna, we have a large, uh, transit population here because this goes to Manhattan. So we have at any given time ten to twenty people that'll wait for this bus, especially during rush hour. If any of them are in a wheelchair, like Bob said, they're stuck. I don't know where the ramps are. Are these gonna be?
Can I just clarify something really quickly here? Sorry to butt in. On these places, we're not cutting any of these, these extended sidewalks out. We're just providing ramps for bikes to be able to go over them. And other bus stops that don't have these, such as at Warring Avenue, we're providing ADA compliant bus stops where these, where these larger sidewalks don't exist. So, I just wanted to clarify that. We're not, we're not shit. We're only bringing bikes over these sidewalks.
So there's gonna be a curb here and a curb here and no guardrail or gate or anything to protect people or families that are walking over or through?
I, I can't see, I can't see where you're pointing, but there are gonna be ramps to bring, much like there are already ramps for pedestrians. We'll be adding ramps for bike, bikes at these green, that is just green paint.
So basically, you're gonna give them permission to ride on the sidewalk, which we've been complaining about for a large amount of years. Because this is gonna be a dangerous sharp turn for pedestrians because it's a very crowded corner. You have the bank right here. You have the restaurant across the street. It's not so crowded on the, on the west side, but on this corner here.
On the east side of White Plains Road, he's pointing.
It's not as, there's not as much traffic down here as there is here. People coming off the train, this is gonna ram them right as they come off the train. And they're rushing out as they get off of the train here to come home, especially about five, six o'clock. I'm assuming you're not gonna shut this down at any particular time. In fact, this might even increase. You'll have a flood of people coming out of this, this train station to go back home. Every single, if you go there for five, six, seven o'clock, anywhere between that period, you'll see about fifty to seventy people come out at a rush. This isn't gonna be feasible. We do need, uh, you don't need to pull up the diagram, but this bump out was extremely effective and safe. So, for Waring Avenue, and I just want to put on the record the proper pronunciation of the, of the street. A bump out in that area would be funding well spent. And I wouldn't encourage any bikes because we just had an accident here, uh, I want to say sometime last week. With the stanchions in the middle, you're not gonna see, even if you're over here, you're riding, it's chaotic over here. Bronx Park East doesn't have bike lanes. The funding for here, I would look here and I would look at Bronxdale Avenue. Uh, that has the high schools. It has no businesses where there'll be.
You mean Bronxwood, not Bronx.
Uh, excuse me, yes, Bronxwood, uh, by Columbus High School, all the way up. I think that's more feasible because it doesn't have as heavy of a traffic to have bike lanes in those two areas. Uh, Bronx Park East.
Joan Marie.
Yes, hello. Hi, how are you?
Hi, you wish to speak?
Yes, I mean, I've been writing so much inside the chat already. So I am a teacher. I work on Bronxdale Avenue. And I can say since they did that road diet, it's been a disaster, a disaster, I'm sorry. My kids, they come off the bus and they're practically going right into the bike lane. And I can tell you, there's been so much more traffic on Bronxdale since they did that design that cars are literally going onto the bike lane. I have emailed somebody at the forty-ninth precinct because of that and it's becoming so dangerous. There's been more accidents since that design and I feel like if they do it on White Plains Road, it's gonna be even worse. Because right now, as it is, like the other gentleman said, I forgot his name, they are double parking even so into the street more. To, right now, to where we can't even drive. It's, it's, it's chaotic over there. So imagine if they put a bike lane. And then on top of that, I don't want to keep on stressing because I know I sound crazy with this no parking issue, but they had taken forty-something parkings from us already. So what's gonna happen on White Plains Road? We already don't got parking because all the trucks out there selling food. Now we're gonna have, what do you call them, pillars or platforms for the buses, which is right there where the bingo hall used to be. They took that whole strip of, um, meters, right? So they're gonna do it more White Plains Road. So he's saying, so where is everybody gonna park? We're congested as it is. There's so many issues. I'm like totally against it. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all that I registered.
Okay, so Hazel, do you have anything to say up there before I say something? I see a hand there.
No, Rabbi, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask DOT a very blunt question, which I think is very, very important. Is this plan totally, totally approved? And I guess the second part of that question is, if I recommend, so I'll make a motion to bring DOT to the next planning board meeting, which is June, what day, twenty?
The full board?
Full board. Make a presentation for the community. Twenty-seven? DOT up to that? I'm not saying I'm doing that. I'm just seeing if DOT is up to that.
Rabbi, this is Anthony Perez.
Hi, Anthony. How are you? How are you?
We are continuously listening and hearing whether there needs to be adjustments. We've heard the concerns that were brought up by members or, or community members like Diana Finch and others that had specific considerations for particular corners. Uh, we are making adjustments as we go, even in Community Board Twelve, where District Manager George Torres mentioned the issues with the painted lines. Uh, as he knows, we are repaving the whole White Plains Road and repainting those lines, learning from the issues that we saw from the implementation. So we are constant, nothing is ever a final thing. We're always looking back to make changes, including for this proposal. So if this board comes back with specific issues that they want to raise, uh, we can, we would love to consider those and find a way to make things work. Um, and in terms of a future meeting, I think we'll cross that bridge when we get there, if you decide to invite us to it. But I would just say that we've already presented twice, the same presentation to pretty much the same room of people. Again, if you email us, call us, send us a letter in writing, if you have particular issues, we're listening. But if it's the exercise to presenting again and hearing the same questions, I'm not sure there's much value to that. But again, we're happy to do what we're invited to.
I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, and I thank you for your response. But my concern, what I heard here was, there's a lot of concerns, but one of the biggest concerns was about the store owners. Uh, not having that input, Commissioner. Could you respond to that? Were the store owners really, really asked about this plan? Do you have any documentation on that?
We did. There's like literal photos in the presentation of people going door to door. We have our street ambassadors that went to meet these business owners. Uh, as you asked the person who asked, who raised that comment, you should ask them which businesses they went to. Are they even on the same strip where this bike lane is being installed? Uh, I think on White Plains Road, that's right, not, not Pellon Parkway South, but.
Pellon Parkway North. At the last meeting, you said south, it's north.
Yeah, no, I'm correcting the fact that it wasn't south, just like I said at the last meeting, and I'm repeating it again. That is not Pellon Parkway South.
Okay, Commissioner, with your permission, if indeed that is a major minor issue, we will get you a list of store owners that are basically stating that they did not have any input, if that's okay with you. If that's okay with you. Maybe a block was missing, maybe three stores were missing, whatever. Okay, we'll figure it out. Okay. Um, any other questions for the DOT?
We said something about how to unmute on the phone. That person didn't do anything, so.
So any other questions from DOT? Okay, yes, let's start there. Go ahead. You'll be next.
I think as this project is discussed, we shouldn't be discussing whether or not this project is a good idea, because that question is already being answered by the data. We already know this design works on White Plains Road. The twenty twenty-two portion had a fifteen percent reduction in injuries. And I believe that figure is for all road users, pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists. This is a project that, as it's extended to the CB eleven portion of White Plains Road, will benefit everyone that has to cross the street with shorter crossing distances. Uh, it will benefit bus riders who in the future will have accessible bus boarding islands and will benefit drivers by having a more predictable road. So it's inaccurate to just characterize this as solely a bike lane project. It's like the Morse Park Avenue road diet in which the, it's a safety project where the bike lanes are kind of a bonus. So the conversation we should be having is how we can improve the project. Uh, for instance, I would like to see more physical protection to keep vehicles out of the bike lanes. Uh, I look forward to this project being implemented and, uh, I did have one question. Uh, any word on future bicycle connections to Allerton Avenue?
I'm sorry, Michael, you're asking if there's any what?
Uh, any word on future bicycle connections to Allerton Avenue? Uh, I believe at one point, uh, when the e-scooter pilot was initially rolled out, there were at one point, plans to have a connection to Allerton Avenue, to the existing bike lane there.
All right, do me a favor. Send me an email on this and we'll look into it.
All right, thank you.
I also.
Ladies first.
I saw Jean's concern about having the bike kind of roll over the sidewalk. I actually do share the same concern, especially with, you know, high school students taking a subway and not being mindful. Is there any way that we could install maybe those rubber cones that separate the bike lane from the rest of the sidewalk to give them also, in addition to the painted strip, a visual signal like do not cross this line because they can be hurt?
One of the challenges with that is that as it's currently designed, or at least the northern section, pedestrians and bicyclists share the same sidewalk cut. So the sidewalk, and I think this would be better anyway to have a separate sidewalk cut for bicycles and pedestrians, but the way it's currently designed, um, then someone in the hypothetical wheelchair user would have to go over or around one of those and it might cause problems. I, I think another sidewalk cut would make more sense all around.
So, Allerton, is that bike lane gonna be like what's on Southern Boulevard or what's on two thirty-third at the Metro North area? Is it gonna be similar to that? Holly?
Sorry, it's gonna, it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna just be like, it's not like those ones where it's it where, it's, it's gonna just be, I mean, if you look at other subway stations on White Plains Road further north, that's what it'll look like. It's gonna be some paint, some green paint and yield markings on the, on the expanded sidewalk there.
Okay. Anybody else? Ryan, what do you think to say?
Yeah.
Say it.
I am generally in favor of it, but I definitely share the enforcement concerns. At the May meeting, I sent a question I wasn't able to attend, but if there would be any sort of physical mode filtering, because as. District Manager Torres and others have mentioned, there is little respect for the parking rules that exist. Um, and without some sort of physical barrier, I did, and FDNY was mentioned, they completely ignore the bike lane. And of course, they're. Uh, not really held accountable in that space above Gun Hill. So I'm really worried about that. I'd like to read this comment. There was. Uh, comment on Reddit that was talking about this and. It really sums it up well. My travels around the city to keep transportationalternative.org slash bikelanes updated, the existing White Plains lanes are unfortunately about the most blocked in the city. Almost completely unusable. Illegal parking, complete lack of enforcement are on a whole other level, even compared to how bad things are citywide. So I just don't understand how this would be any better when I use that road, or I mean, I don't use it anymore. I take the. Uh, I take the greenway. Instead, because it is. Effectively unusable. Um, I am glad that it has resulted in some pedestrian safety improvements and some cyclist safety improvements, but it's. Extremely challenging. As for the schools, this has come up a few times with Bronxdale Avenue and uh, and now on White Plains Road. I wonder if there's any way to get some sort of bus bulb for the bike lane at the schools. Kind of like what, as Bob Press mentioned, the one on Southern Boulevard, even if it's a temporary one as opposed to a concrete one, but some way to provide. An, a, a physical. Way for bicyclists to see that this is a separate place and a safer way for students to cross from the bus into the school, because that is, you know, legitimate concern. And as people have brought up economic activity, DOT has done this study. Long term and for individual projects and generally economic activity is positively impacted by the addition of bike lanes and safety improvements. I understand that owners are worried about people parking, but in general. It shows a positive increase, so, or a positive effect on businesses, so. That's all I had.
I have a question.
Sure you have a question. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Veronica. I'm the acting chair, board chair. I have a question for Anthony Perez. You say that in regards to Community Board twelve, that you make uh modifications and changes for things that come up. What have you done with respect for FDNY's issue of not being able to. Um, adequately attentive fires because of the bike lanes? And what are you doing for the protective bike lanes for DSNY to be able to clean them?
Sure, so.
That's a problem there.
Sure, so the, the lanes, as were they initially, sorry, let me go back for a second. Because of FDNY's concern about not having access to the curb. We created what we call channelized spaces, is where you see those squares with the stripes. And that was specifically done in response to that people wouldn't be parking in those areas. What we learned though is that people mistook that for angled parking. So we also learned, as Mr. Torres mentioned, that there was issues with uh the condition of the road because only paint was, was put down. So we're, we, as part of our rescheduling, repaving schedule. We're repaving that whole section of White Plains Road, putting in fresh new paint. And making the lines more narrowed together to make it clear for drivers that they shouldn't be parking in spaces that were created for the FDNY. And those lanes are made wide enough so that DSNY can fit inside those bike lanes between the cars and the curb to still pick up the trash there. So they're made wide enough on purpose for DSNY's requirements.
And if for some reason DSNY doesn't go in there, whose responsibility will it be to make sure that that section is clean?
We will work with DSNY. We can change the signs for alternate side parking. Uh, we've made it wide enough for their vehicles to fit in. We've consulted with our sister agencies to accommodate these concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Malcolm has his hand up.
Malcolm has his hand up. Hey Malcolm, it's all yours.
What's up, what's up? So, um, can you guys hear me?
We are perfect.
Awesome. So because I work with a lot of the small businesses on the CB twelve area of White Plains Road. And I know, and I can tell you for sure that majority of business owners there do not like the bike lanes. Um, they credit the bike lanes for um the loss of business. But also, you know, in operation standards, in operation standards. It, I, I can attest that there has been issues with DSNY properly attending to trash pickup due to the bike lanes. Um, in fact, it's because of that, um, you know, we've, we've had to do meetings with. City bins alongside Casman Riley's office um to look for containerization bins. So I, I definitely say that I think that uh, you know. More scrutiny towards DSNY's and DOT's collaboration on the bike lanes and how garbage cleanup effort looks like. Um, should be looked into a lot more. Um, and I'll also say that, you know, there's just, you know, the bike lanes there. I, I, from looking at that map. I, I can't really see it as being thoroughly positive in those areas. Um, just knowing that no belt parking is going to happen. In fact, triple parking has arisen for some weird reason. Um, people just don't respect the bike lanes. I, I see people drive right through them. Um, you know, I, I just don't think that the current infrastructure along the, the, the train path. Is appropriate for a bike lane and can sufficiently.
Right.
Um, support that amount of traffic or that, that type of improvement. I, I think, I think what Jean's proposal makes a little bit more sense for the bike lanes. As those areas is this, it, it, it allows proximity to some commercial areas. But also, also allows for more safety and more. Um, more, more of a clearer passage um for, for those uh cyclists. But that's about it.
Thank you, Malcolm. Thank you so much. Um, any other questions from the board, from the audience, from the committee? Got a question or? Uh, okay, so let's put two questions together. One question, which I think would not unanswered DOT, which was unanswered. Was about, all about these food establishments that wanna go out to the sidewalk, make like a cafe. Dream Cafe, whatever you call it. And Roxanne is saying, what type of bike lane?
Traditional.
Traditional bike lane.
Unprotected bike lane.
Unprotected bike lane. Is that possi- is that possibility?
So just very quickly with the, the restaurants and the dining out cafes. If there's parking in front of the restaurant like there currently is, they can continue to put in. Um, cafes in the parking here. It's done on many examples of protected bike lanes throughout the city. It's just in the same parking spot. It's not directly on the sidewalk. Um, the reason we're doing, and then the verse, the other question, it's a protected bike lane because that's the safety project. There's no. Way to safely implement a standard bike lane on a road like White Plains Road. This allows us to make a safety improvement for everybody using the street.
Excellent.
Why can they implement it?
This question. Mr. Jeff?
Yes, sir. He said that street, the store, the food establishment could use the street for the street cafe, you know, street dining. However, if the bike lane is going through there, it'll be on the bike lane. Are you saying that the bike lane will go around the street uh dining?
Mr. Press. Ben clearly said that they could use the business in the parking space. So where there's a bike lane and then a parking space, the restaurant would have their outdoor seating in the parking space, not in the lane, not in the sidewalk, but in the parking space.
So you're saying past the bike lane, so people would have to come, the waiters would have to go through the bike lane. The parking area.
Yes, sir. It exists across the city. It, it is not a crazy novel example. It's not the first time and it exists where there's outdoor dining, there's a bike lane.
Yep.
Why can't it?
Bob, may I share you? This is an example.
Anyway, let's try to keep some order here. Mr. DeFrancis, you have a final statement or you're just looking?
A question. Because they. They totally bypassed your, your question on documentation. Usually when you wanna go ahead with a project. You get petitions, you sign, I spoke to Primos uh owner on a constant basis. They had no idea about this. And I just, I'm also disappointed there's no uh economic impact statement. As to how it will affect and despite popular belief. We are very organized. We will monitor the uh, the economic. Uh, effect that this has on our stores in that corridor. Um, we highly recommend that you look at Bronx Park East. And no one mentioned even the cost in any of these proposals, the, the last months. Proposal that you, presentation that you did and this one, there was no mention of cost on how much this project will cost. Uh, but I feel like you could divide uh Bronxwood Avenue and Bronx Park East. Uh, a little bit more clearly and efficiently as opposed to uh try to create this chaos under White Plains Road.
You know, Rabbi, Kifoo in Bronxdale, it's new, has no business because there's no place to park. People that live more park, they, they drive to Stu Leonard because they can't park in front of Kifoo. They have, it's like they have no business and it's a still our new supermarket. Adventure is very close because you cannot run such a huge market with no customers. Anyone could walk in and see how empty it is.
But then discuss it directly with them.
For here. Okay, so Hazel, you're there. You're my co-chair. I think we've heard from the public. The only, I'm starting a motion. And hopefully DOT will respond to something I requested. From Jean, from Roxanne, something from the community. A statement from the business workers, businesses, the businesses stating that they were not consulted. Or if they were consulted, they are against it. And then we will get it over to the Commissioner if that's okay with the Commissioner. Is that okay with you, Commissioner?
Sure.
But Chairman, I just want to clarify, we are in favor of the bump out of Waring Avenue.
Right.
It, it is helpful.
Yeah, and I'm just talking now about what. Now, actually, I just got one final thing that just came to my head. So Mr. Torres spoke beautifully about from CB twelve. Does the DOT, and this is not a negative, it's just a question. Do you do like a lessons learned? From people like Mr. Torres that are speaking about what has happened? In his project over there? Or do you just do a, as a separate proposal for CB eleven? You know, so my question is, I mean. Every proposal in America has loopholes and has defaults at the end. Do you take the defaults and the loopholes and the problems and then say, wow, in CB eleven? I hit typical example, the police, the forty ninth precinct, and I don't know this for sure. But if they give out three parking tickets a day, it's probably, it's a lot because. They are now down to what, eighty-six? Seventy-four. You, there's one guy that I think runs, watches people going through the red light or something like that. Nice guy, I've got his name. But there is no, if you call up the precinct, that somebody's double parked or something like that. They are not flying to give out tickets. So that's a typical example, I guess, of a lessons learned, which I would say, which Mr. Torres spoke about. How? How besides getting those, what the traffic enforcement people? How do we make sure that this does not create traffic chaos? Since the forty ninth precinct will basically be out of the picture.
So to say, we continue, we continue to look at the work that has happened in Community Board twelve. Commissioner Perez spoke about some of the changes that we've already made there. And we're gonna continue to learn, use those lessons to make sure that the product, both the project already installed in Community Board twelve. And any portion on here on Community Board eleven is as effective as possible.
Excellent. Okay. Quick question is.
At the forty ninth precinct breakfast. The forty ninth precinct told me that they did meet with DOT to go over this bike lane plan.
Okay.
So maybe we could ask them. About their meeting with DOT.
Okay. Okay, I'll talk to the, whatever the call that. I'll talk to the community. I know, not. Okay. My favorite line.
Wait, wait, no, I don't want to dismiss them. There's something.
You know what I was gonna say?
It's your favorite line?
Nope. My favorite line was, does anyone have any other question? Debbie, don't read into my mind. That was my second favorite line too. It's just, anybody have any final question?
On. End of the subscription.
While you have DOT still here. Uh, Eastchester Road.
This is a totally different thing.
Totally.
And I do a totally different.
And they have to wait for the gallery section.
Yeah, you can wait the gallery. If they wanna stay, I want them to.
Please, if who they spoke to.
I want them to stay. Yeah, I'm sure.
They spoke.
Okay, um, we're gonna continue to meeting DOT. And we're gonna go first to a gallery session. And I'm skipping around for a simple reason. Because it might, if you have another few minutes, you might see some questions to DOT. So is it okay I keep you another few minutes? All at once, DOT, ten minutes? Thank you. Okay. Um.
Kevin.
Okay, gallery session, Mr. Kevin. Do you have anything that would, yeah, you have something about it. To find out status of Eastchester and Bike Network. Would you like to state your question, please, Kevin? Thank you for coming. Kevin?
Kevin?
Okay.
It's kind of a sound turn, it looks like.
Okay. They're not there. Debbie, we're not gonna, I was, they can't help them. Okay. So anybody else registered for gallery? No.
Well, there's something that I want to stick with DOT.
Okay, Malcolm, sweet.
Ollie, can you hear me? Thumbs up if you can hear me, Ollie.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I want to first of all, thank you for repaving Lydic Avenue. Second of all, I really, really want to thank you for the stop sign I asked for twenty years for at Mulliner and Lydic Avenue. Um, but with the repaving, I was wondering when you're gonna get around to putting the stop lines at. Holden, Holden, Matthews and Barnes. Because people are running those stop signs. Because their little cue symbol on the street is not there anymore.
I, Debbie, do me a favor, send myself and Jesus an email with this tomorrow, so we could follow up with you on that.
Okay, also. There's a, and I'll, I'll send you also the picture of this. There's a huge sinkhole. On Lydic Avenue at, at eight. Like huge. Uh, even, even the conex in it is almost disappeared. Um, I know sinkholes kind of fall under uh DP, so that would be kind of F C's area. But I mean, you guys just paved the street and there's a huge.
Send me a photo. We could send inspectors out. If they feel that it's DP, they'll send a corrective uh action request to DP. But again. This is, you could, this could have been, yeah, send it to me.
Yeah, um. I was also wondering, will you get, get around to fixing the twisted um, street sign at Herring that I showed you guys a couple of months back? I was wondering when, when those street signs will be replaced.
I'm sorry, Debbie, we, we weren't prepared to answer any of these questions. Can you please use some writing and we'll happily respond to every single one of your requests.
Yeah, cuz I, I asked, I asked you guys for the, the walkthrough last month over at Pella Parkway and. Kind of got crickets there, so.
We'll make sure that happens.
Okay, um, and is there any possible way? The, on the bus line on Pella Parkway. Is there any possible way to put like an arrow or something to indicate to? Cars that at Eastchester or Williamsbridge Road, they're allowed to enter the bus lane to turn because.
Signs, there are signs that state that.
I know there's signs, but the signs are so small, except especially the part that says, and right turn. It is like so small. Today I had three cars cut me off. I'm in the bus. I had three cars cut me off at Eastchester Road and six cars cut me off at Williamsbridge Road. This is a daily occurrence. And those little words off to the side mixing that blue sign, they're not getting the message.
Okay, so when you send us the email, we can log that request. And see if that's something that's feasible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Debbie, thank you.
Gallery session's over?
No, gallery's not over. It's. Kevin gets that now, Kevin. We found Kevin. Kevin?
Thank you. I, I froze out. Thank you. Um, couple of quick things. I got two minutes, so I'll ramble them all off real fast. First, I'm very happy as a commuter in the Bronx. That Bronx CB eleven has passed the resolution approving intro eight fifty-four, which is the daylighting uh resolution to the state. And uh, it will require a hundred. Daylighting intersections per calendar year. Now, if you think about that, it's really only two. Now, if you think about that, it's really only two per community board. What it really should be, it should be one hundred per borough or one hundred per, uh, council member. We'll move on from that subject. Number two, traffic control, uh, control signals, headlight cameras. It seems we might have won that battle, but we need to push our senators and assembly people to get that last piece, uh, pushed off, so we can increase the number of red light cameras in New York City from a hundred and fifty out of fifteen thousand to the only presenting, uh, point five percent or six hundred for fifteen thousand intersections. Uh, C and E, um, if DOT can shed any light on the future, uh, finishing of Eastchester Road Bicycle Network from Penn Parkway to Waters Place and from Waters to Westchester Avenue. I will consider that old business as I bring it up monthly for the committee or end or board to ask you. And that wasn't asked tonight. And part two of that is always Bronxdale Avenue, the same thing, when we can finish that, also at Tremont Avenue. Um, this might be more of a New York State, but I want to bring it up, I brought it up to the, uh, community, uh, I brought up to the district manager in Community Board eleven today, but not to the board. But, uh, I understand New York State might have gotten some recent approvals on extending some, uh, Egress into the Hutchinson Metro Center from the Hutchinson River Parkway. Which of course would cross over the Hutchinson River Greenway. Whether that's with the Service Road, has some artwork that I've seen, or with just an Egress crossing over, which is not necessarily something that is not needed. But is there any input you can give us from the state, who must have contacted New York City about that kind of a project and its status? That would be my only question, would be that New York State piece, for anybody in DOT, if you could answer it. Other than that, thank you very much. Um, and if you don't know, I'll be off my bike for a little while, you can talk to me privately about that. That though.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, do me a favor again, just send me the state question and email, and I'll look it up for you.
Okay, he's talking.
Official question for DOT?
Well, also, gallery session.
Gallery, gallery, go ahead.
Bronxdale South Parking Lot, this official was taking up another car that was hit two days ago, but they have to do a team at the farm parking yesterday. And many people mentioned how their car forgot to get in. I want to know if we do that last four, and people are loving to request lighting in the Bronxdale Park.
I spoke to them again, I spoke to them, and I spoke to, um, I spoke to Jeremy, or.
Anyway, look at the address and.
Do we send the letter out to them?
But. I don't think there was ever a motion done on it.
There was a motion, we, we voted yes, but.
That was never done, all right, so second issue is, I mentioned to Holly, again, I was doing the, taking that Bronx Park East Farmers Market. And we had that conflict on the southeast of Bronxdale, White Plains Road. On the right turn, the lighting does not coordinate well with the red light, so cars are stopping to allow, to yield to pedestrians for the crossing. Yet, uh, it, the light turns green for the crossing, so if people are crossing, people's cars are still progressing to turn. But there's some kind of lighting, um, miscoordination, which I mentioned, I, again, I took videos yesterday.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a bit confused, you're saying that the pedestrians have the walk signal?
Yes.
The drivers are still able to make a left or right turn?
Right turn.
A right turn?
Yes.
So drivers are to yield to pedestrians?
Well, the light that makes, permits it goes straight from red to green, there's not even a yellow for them to slow down.
Okay, send me the location with the video, we could see if that's an issue, please.
To you last year at the Farmers Market, you said the, the investigation is, there was nothing wrong with the lighting, but it, again, I saw it happen again. And it's a danger. Lastly, is it possible for DOT, within asking that, to provide the data of Bronxdale after you implemented the Bronx, uh, the Bronxdale Road Dive? Because as, uh, as many people said here and previous meetings, there's more incidents now. Because now that cars are parked, uh, stopping in the moving lane, the remaining moving lane turns to two direction lane. It has caused many incidents, so can we get that data? Because how can we proceed, we continue to proceed with these protected bike lanes where they seem like they cause more dangerous situations for pedestrians, like myself?
So, I, sorry folks, my, my laptop died, I just turned it back in, this is Anthony again. The answer is yes, we can provide you with the data, but as we've said before, what we'd like to compare is three years before implementation and three years after implementation. It gives you a good sense of what's actually happening and not what's a fluke or what might be an outlier in data. So if we just look at right now, we would only look at one year of data because it was installed basically last March. So we can show you that information, but we don't think that that is the best use of information. And with that said, I have looked at it, and it actually shows that there's been reductions in crashes, so we're happy to show you that. But what we're saying is, if we want a real assessment, let's look at the three-year data versus the three-year data.
Okay, I also have recorded many incidents that happened since March, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, but then now, nothing else in gallery. Okay, now, we could, so you have something gallery now?
While Mr. Perez is still on, uh, so you're saying that the outdoor dining, or street dining would be on White Plains Road, would be next to the travel lane, am I correct, Mr. Perez? So if a food establishment is at the corner, so there will be cars sitting there, waiting for the light with their exhaust going, and a person sitting there will be breathing, breathing in these exhausts from the cars or buses or trucks. Uh, that's what you want, that's what DOT wants, that people dining will be breathing.
If a restaurant requests it, and the community board is fine with it, and the customer goes there and buys their food, then yes.
I'm sure the health department will love to hear that.
Is fine with it, then sir, yes.
Right now, I asked the community board to vote against this back lane. And what is the future of the rest of White Plains Road, are you going down to Soundview with this bike lane?
As of right now, we do not have a current proposal, but when we do, we'd be having to present it to that community board.
And, uh, one final thing while I have you. Uh, why is the Eastchester Road bike lane being put in front of the police station? Einstein Hospital ambulance and emergency entrance, and not the other side of the road?
Question was asked long, how long? That was asked a long time, three years ago.
Well, that was, he wasn't the commissioner, maybe ask commissioner.
At the last meeting, you said that we never presented, we did. It's online, every single page of the presentation, you can review it, page by page. It's because of the network, it needs to connect to the actual network. And we want to make sure that the bike lanes are continuous and in the safest way possible. And it wouldn't work across the street because some of the restrictions across the street and how the street is designed.
Intersections, it's safer on the other side, but, uh, forget about the police and the ambulances. Uh, I guess I'll have to talk to Mayor, your boss, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, sir. Okay, thank you. Um, that concludes the gallery session. Now we're going to go a little backwards. And we're going to call, okay, now I think I could tell DOT that please, thank you for joining us today, and you could go about your duties, which you have to do tonight, and getting ready for tomorrow. Have a great evening, DOT, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Permission, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go to draft daylighting. And I'm going to call upon my dear friend Ryan to speak a little about it, and then we can make a motion right off of this. Here, please, that's right.
Thanks, um, I mentioned this a couple of times, but as I've said in the past, the mayor, and as Kevin mentioned actually as well, the mayor has put forth a plan to daylight intersections throughout the city, a dozen other community boards, one other in the Bronx, six in Manhattan, couple each in Queens and Brooklyn, um, have passed a resolution to support that, and in supporting that, they're also putting forward what's important to them about it. Like making sure that there is something in that space to prevent parking. Um, and trying to protect, trying to focus on intersections that are more important to them. So I am proposing that we send a resolution to the DOT Commissioner, that Community Board eleven supports this, and that we're supporting it. Especially around these vulnerable intersections, like around our schools or senior centers. Um, and that they use some funding to add in some durable infrastructure to make, reduce the reduce the burden on the police for enforcing it, make it a self-enforcing.
Okay, stated in the form of a motion, and then we could second it.
I'd like to make a motion, the Community Board eleven, send a resolution to the DOT Commissioner and Borough Commissioner that we support the daylighting proposal or daylighting plan from the mayor.
Do we have a second for that? I'll second it. Any objections?
Discussion?
Any discussion?
As long as there's some sort of whether it's even those stick stanchion things, because over my way, there's a bunch of daylighting, and it needs it for the fire trucks to make the turn and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But I can't tell you how many times somebody's parked there.
Yeah.
And heck, not even half, more than half the time, it's, somebody would have placard. Somebody would have placard.
Yeah, it is.
So, ew, because like with that stop sign, I've been asking for twenty years for you know, they first put a daylighted spot there, I couldn't okay, I can't park there, but somebody else was parked there, and I, I couldn't see. So it gets why we really needed that stop sign.
Yeah, so there, and I don't remember the exact name of it, but there is a pot of money that has been identified by some of these other boards. I can look it up and send you the name of it, but to add that, and some of the suggestions that they have are like planters or um, stormwater infrastructure, so somewhere, just a little thing with some plants, so that the water has somewhere to go instead of running into the sewer. Um, bike parking, which I as a bike, I don't think that's probably the best use of that space, but something to keep people physically out of there, um, is the, and that included in the resolution.
Planters, I don't think would be good, because if a fire truck needs to make the turn, it's going to have to barrel down that planter. At least the stick stanchion wiggles and wobbles.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, and I wrote a draft resolution, I believe it was attached to the email that we got, uh, and in there, it said.
Yeah, this is a hyperlink, so that might be.
Yeah, so it should be some sort of physical thing to help enforce it. And I'd be happy for any notes, I mean, I, you know.
Hold on, Veronica's going to see if she can pull it up and share.
Back up.
So do you want to amend the motion or leave it as is?
Hazel, can you, Hazel, can you see the, uh, draft letter now?
Yeah, it's very, I can't really read it, but.
I don't know, Ryan, do you want to read it out so people who can't really read it, they can hear it?
Um, that, sure, I the motion is, so to Hazel's question, the motion is just to send a letter, not necessarily this letter, or the motion is this letter with amendments, if that is what we end up doing. What I had written, we are writing to inform you, the Bronx Community Board eleven has voted in favor of a resolution to support Mayor Adams's plan for universal daylighting in New York City. This plan will make our district and city safer for all road users. Daylighting is a measure that has proven to reduce deaths and injuries, where it has been successfully implemented. And NYC DOT's data show that the most common way for people outside of cars to be seriously injured is while legally crossing in a crosswalk. We urge the, uh, DOT to prioritize intersections that serve the most vulnerable pedestrians near community centers, senior centers, schools, and parks. And to implement daylighting with physical barriers, such as green stormwater infrastructure, scooter share parking, bike parking, et cetera. Using physical barriers is critical to increase compliance without having to increase the enforcement burden on NYPD. This measure is widely supported by our elected officials. Uh, with all of our council members at the time, voting in favor of ma- measure eight fifty-four A, which was a council resolution that was not signed by the mayor, but all of our council members, uh, at the time, it was Council Member Velazquez, Riley, and Feliz. Um, and we also have a public letter of support from Assembly Member Alvarez. And hypothetically supported by our board with some number voting in favor, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, this is, this is the thing in there, added about, like, stanchions and whatnot to block.
Okay, take a vote. Who's in favor of Mr. Ryan's motion about the daylighting?
I am.
Okay, we got four yeses, I guess it's four yeses, four yeses?
Five.
Five yeses. Okay, any attention? Any?
Hazel say?
Yes. It's all together.
Six, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
All right, thank you all.
Well, it's seven and.
Seven?
Edgar.
I can, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I agree with seven, okay, so it's still unanimous, thank you, Debbie. Seven zero. Okay, okay, six, seven.
Six, I, I don't count a vote, I was just seeing five.
Okay, okay, next. Okay, now, uh, Hazel, I have a question for you. Mr. Jeremy was supposed to give back to me about Steve, three permits, to see if we had problems with any of these that are listed here.
He's, he said, he told us before he left, he spoke with NYPD, and it was none.
Thank, thank you, Debbie, true. Okay.
Debbie was physically here before.
Okay, so that means, for all these upcoming ones, whether being new, old, or in between, I am making a motion that we approve the permits for all these establishments. And again, my measuring stick is police objections. And since there is no police objections, the motion is to approve that.
I second that.
Seconded by Hazel. Any discussion, discussion on?
Discussion on this, there's a, a question or maybe an issue about the Alton Food Festival. That's being, that's usually handled by the Alton International Merchants Association, and there is a plan for it to go on this year. Um, this wasn't implemented by the Merchants Association, this was put in by somebody else, so.
Influenced by a block association.
Yeah, who are trying to take over that particular event, but that event is the Alton International Merchants Association's event, and they are planning on bringing it back this year.
Okay, but we're not going to do two events. Okay, it's only for yourself. There's two people competing for the same event?
It shouldn't be competition, I can give you the whole.
The other person was basically, was trying to hijack.
Okay.
Well, it's very.
Excuse me, excuse.
Thank you.
One minute, has a permit been put in for that? Because there, you know, there's a time limit on these permits.
In three months.
So, again, has, has the permit been, is, had been put in for it?
Uh, not if this one goes through, there'll be a lawsuit put in for it.
Basically, we're planning on, we have a few days left to get the permit in for the thirty days. But we're not going to put on a food festival right after another food festival, because it can interfere with the business of the merchants in Alton, and we don't want to compromise them, because two or three events in the same time span, or within a few months, is detrimental to the.
Okay, so Veronica, I hear what you're saying. I hear it loud and clear, how do we resolve this?
Um, I suggest that we approve all of them with the exception of the Alton Food Festival, and that one we will table.
Hazel, my dear, I agree with you a hundred percent, but this Alton Food Festival has been schlepping on for three months.
I understand that, but it.
Ryan, no, it's schlepping on.
But I think that we cannot hold off on approving the other ones, just because of this one particular issue. So I suggest, oh, excuse me, I suggest that we table it for further discussion, but approve the other ones, because we have to move on this already, it's been taken too long.
Right, okay, well Hazel, I hear you loud and clear. But we're going to have another transportation meeting, I don't know, the beginning of July, whatever day, we are?
No.
Um, we might have to just talk about this one. Might be this, okay, so we're not having a meeting beginning of July?
We might have, we, we might have to have an emergency meeting. A brief emergency meeting, but.
Okay, something about the Mr., Hazel, excuse me, I'm sorry I'm interrupting you so much.
It's okay.
Mr. De Francis on this one.
So I want to clarify. Mr. Mr. Alton, okay, Mr. Alton. So in twenty twenty, our festival was shut down, the Alton International Food Festival. We ran the organization with the homeowners and with Marjo Knight. Twenty twenty, it was shut down. Twenty twenty-one, we had the idea of starting it back up, but. But our vendors were still weary, the elected officials were still weary, so we held back when a block association came in and took our permits. We did all the, well, technically, we didn't do the footwork. We were grandfathered from an Naomi Rivera, which got passed on to Mark Joe night. Which then we took over uh, when Mark became city councilman with his permission and blessing. And we worked with the Alton homeowners who uh, we still work with and will be working with on this project with the council member, with the assembly member. This is an individual block association. Uh, the person in question is running for public office. This is where their own public uh, stance. So. We can't afford to shut down the avenue twice, reroute the buses. Um, the businesses model that, so. When our permit was transferred to this block association, we fought it. Um, it. Fell on deaf ears in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, it was shut down. So there was no festival in twenty twenty three. Now we're here twenty twenty four. We wanna get the the food festival back up. In fact, when the individual went door to door saying they want the International Food Festival instead of the hip hop festival. They overwhelmingly said, we want the food festival back. But there was no logo. Alton Merchant Association or Barnes Block Association on said petition. So the community itself with their own petition stated that they wanted the food festival back, which is why now they're now trying to steal. Our uh, our event. So we've been in touch with the promoter, that's Jackie uh, Acevedo. She's back on board, everybody's back on board and we're ready to go, but if there's gonna be a conflicting event. You know, we're gonna have a different issue.
Right, so I hear you loud and clear, Jean. Now again, I don't know the city law on this.
I doubt very much, Rabbi, I doubt very much if the city is going to allow Alton Avenue to be shut down twice.
Yeah, yeah, no, we know that, Hazel. About one hundred percent, that would mean suicide.
And it was irresponsible, it was on art's sake, listen.
But the question is, and I don't know if anybody at the stable knows the answer to this. You aren't grandfathered as the original Coca-Cola, the original.
With the homeowners.
Now, as the city look back and say, since you're the original, you have priority. And will that answer?
That's how it should be. It shouldn't have been transferred over to anyone and the, without them receiving the permits and taking it. He thought we did the responsible thing in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. When we took the advice of everyone not doing a a full on food festival. And it cost us, in the end, someone else snuck in for their own personal gain and attention. That they took it.
Now.
Cause somebody downtown is just being a paper pusher.
Yeah, I know that, I understand what you're saying, Debbie, but. I don't like conflict and I don't want Alton Avenue to be shut down two times in a row. Um. Is there any? Guess for lack of a better word, is there any way to make peace between the two groups?
We support their block association and every year we sponsor it. That's where they originated in front of the library. Uh. That's their parameter. Otherwise, there's no reason for them to do a block, so a a block party on the main strip. Uh, we work with the elected officials. We work with the uh, the other uh, homeowners and tenants association, whereas this is one individual. Uh, operating this project with people from New Jersey.
Well, then I would like to say the following, and I'd like to talk Diane, I just wanna say one thing. Okay, I see what.
Larry's part of aim too, so.
Um, I see what Jean is saying and I'll hear what Diana is saying, I'll hear what Larry is saying soon into the second. Um. Assuming we have to have a little conflict here, but we gotta try to figure out which is the best way to resolve it and we're not gonna do it tonight. And I will go back to what Hazel said. And then we will. Approve all the permits and I think we're just gonna have to table it.
Table what to? July and then, and then what's gonna be?
Okay, I was saying that, okay Diane?
My question is, is individual Grace Slovakian doing another block party? So so she would be. She's put in for two.
She's putting in for three.
Oh, three?
Yeah. Okay, next we go to Larry and then we go to my friend.
Larry?
Uh, thanks guys. I was just gonna say quickly to follow up on what Jean was saying. She was under the pressure, she could do whatever she wants. She could call her, she does her thing and says. Oh, well, Alton hasn't done it for two years or three years. We lost a couple of years like Jean was saying to COVID. And then she says, well, if I want, I could do twelve events, not that I would, but I could do twelve events and then. She piggyback uh, last year's thing off of the the library because he had funding and it's like, well, do you wanna do that? That's fine, that's that's. Your thing on Barnes Avenue. You are not Alton. She brought in hip hop, which the neighborhood does not want. She charges, you know, she charges people for hip hop. It's like, you wanna get authorization for hip hop, we can't stop that. You know, we could say the neighborhood doesn't want it. But then she said, well, she could take over the Alton Food Festival also. Because it hadn't been done. It's like, no, you're not part of Alton. And when I mentioned that at the other meeting several months ago. She, she throws a, a, for lack of a better term, she throws a history fit and says, oh, well, he's nothing more than a figurehead. I'm the president of the Merchants Association. Jean was the founder, but I'm the president. And we are waiting because of this to file the permits. But we've spoken to the merchants, they want the food festival back. So we're looking to to put it in, we're looking for. Either late October, early November, or uh, rather late September, early October. So that's why we we've got a little bit of leeway for the permits.
Right, where'd that come from? September and October, what do you have there?
Delay, we need the three months.
Yeah.
We're willing to do it in the first week of October, October twelfth.
Well, in the beaten sun of July.
The vendors do prefer because of the ovens and the the cooking apparatus.
Okay, uh. Diane, it's all yours. Does anyone wanna say something? Oh, I'm sorry, that's when you sit next to me.
I just have a question theoretically, what is it that we are looking for or would need? Like, I understand that, I I do agree with the decision to table it, but also just strategically, what are we? Are there specific supporting documentations that we're looking for or anything like that with interest of transparency to everybody that's here? What is it that we are waiting on to make it like to have further discussion about?
Right, that's what I I wanna know, because saying it's tabled. Could July and then have a meeting in July and then still it's gonna be tabled or designed or whatnot. Right, I wanna know like a yes or no now as.
I don't necessarily think we need to rush to yes or no. If there's documentation that we need to review, for example, to make an informed decision. That's important. And my question is, is there specific tangible things that we're looking for in order to make a decision in this instance?
I think we need to reach out to the city. And take a look at the application that was submitted along with the documentation. I think we need to talk to, you know, talk to Sapo first. And and see where they're coming from. And also to ask them if there's going, you know, if this is a conflict of interest. Um, because uh, you know, the Merchants Association has been doing this for a long time and. They are grandfathered in, so I think that we should table it. I think that we should. Reach out to Sapo and see what's going on, see what documentation was presented, because I know. That you have to present documentation and I wanna know if the proper documentation was uploaded. And we'll just take it from there. If we have to have a meeting, we'll have a meeting.
Agreed, I just, I wanted that just to be stated, also just for the interest of transparency for everybody that's here, so it doesn't just appear that we're tabling things for the sake of tabling it. There's a specific objective for tabling it.
Okay, so the question is, Hazel, you know the laws was probably better than I do. So if we table it today. And we get the documentation, which I think was an excellent idea. Can we bring it up at the board meeting? And I guess. Untable it and just have.
Yeah.
Have the committee. I guess vote over there.
Rabbi, we don't, we don't have to wait till till July. We can have an imprompt meeting whenever we want. If we get the information that we need. Before the community board, yeah, then I think we should bring it up there.
Okay, well Veronica said leadership, but that's might be tight leadership, when's leadership?
Leadership's the week before.
And there's been times even on the day of full board that. When I've been part of committee, the committee people will arrive a little earlier and will discuss off to the side.
I agree. Okay, so this is the motion now and then everybody's gonna go home soon. The motion will be, one second, I heard one. Okay, the motion will be for all, and I'll state it the right way. For all these street activity permits. The Transportation Committee approves all of them except. The one which is on the bottom of page two and three, which states Alton Food Festival. This will be tabled, will be discussed. In the future, either at the Leadership Committee Meeting, which will take place July, June, whenever. Give me a date, Veronica, or will be discussed. Okay, so.
Will be on.
June? Veronica, give me a suspension.
June. Whereas leadership is gonna be June twenty fourth.
Okay, June twenty fourth to be discussed, either June twenty fourth. At the Leadership Committee or at the Planning Board Meeting, which will take place on June. Twenty seven. Do I have a second of that?
Second that.
Second that. Do we have any discussion on that? Everybody approved the motion?
I don't, I don't approve one of the ones that you're approving, so I just have, I have an objection, so.
Okay, so you want to just state, state the one which you.
I, I just have an objection on the Alton Avenue Strong City Record Studio Fourth Anniversary.
Okay.
I understand I'm gonna be outnumbered on it, but.
Okay, I'll just state it. Okay, so I think I could do it this way, Debbie, I could say. Do we have the motion approved except for one objection from Debbie? For the Alton Avenue Strong City Record Studio Fourth Anniversary.
Which is what she's supposed to block her hip hop.
Alright, Larry.
What's that? Okay, so do we have a full approval of that motion? Eye, 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 and Debbie, I didn't know what your eye is, like a. Three quarter eyes, seven, eight, it's some sort of eye. Okay, that's approved. Okay, any final?
So at the forum last month, it was not voted regarding the letter of support. For lighting at the Bronxville South parking lot because Hazel read it, but she didn't know what it was and you were not in the present at that moment, so it was never voted on.
Okay, so I guess.
We vote on it, please remind them to put it correctly on the agenda, because she read.
I'm writing it, I'm writing.
That's probably somehow it doesn't. Committee.
You got.
The second issue is. What happened on Bronx that they implemented with, uh, during the summer? And the board was notified in June, but they implemented. I want, I want this to happen, White Plains Road that is implemented during summer. Can we do a motion, White Plains Road, and what motion would that be? Regarding the White Plains Road Safety Improvement Plan, as they refer to us.
Yes.
Not nice for safety. It's for political reasons. The thing, I want to say during the summer, they planned to implement this. But the committee, uh, the committee board eleven is not in session during the summer.
Okay.
The hiatus till September.
So you wanna motion add?
What motion we be able to do like? That we.
Okay, well, I wanna see, I think I wanna see, I wanna see the documentation before I can. Not gonna make a motion unless I see.
No, but make the motion that DOT has provided documentation. Can you do that, please, at least there? That they have to meet some kind of uh.
Okay, we might have a board meeting, Roxanne.
Like that light and crosswalk as soon as possible.
Okay.
So uh.
Roxanne, I gotta remember to tell you something. I gotta tell you that picture you showed me of that car being smashed, was that reported to the police?
I don't know, because.
And I get any reports?
But the fact is that police want to do a report, a lot of them don't even want to do a deductible, because it. It affects their premium. It's cheaper for them to have it done repair, then put their insurance with increased five hundred within three months. And it affects the deductible, they still have to meet.
You're reporting to police, I don't think you bring those up.
It does because it automatically.
They told me they didn't want to. Insurance.
Okay, maybe that's why they're not getting.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they are telling the community fair talks about it, just like they told me about.
Okay. Okay, do I, any, let's go, it's not even on here. I understand, old business, any old business. Any old business, any new business. Ryan, any media business? Between business. Okay, we make a motion to adjourn, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good, thank you, Rachel.